We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council legisla-- it's not legislative. Our city council regular meeting for tonight, which is Monday, October the 2nd, 2023, where our invocation will be done by Bishop Anthony Walker of Kingdom of Christ Church Ministries. And then we'll have our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
I bless you and greet you in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and it's an honor to serve. God bless you. Let us pray. Gracious Father, in the name of Jesus, we come to give you praise and to give you glory. Lord, we pray your blessings upon this illustrious council. Lord, in the name of Jesus, that your wisdom and righteousness will prevail. Father, we ask that you guide them in the care and the business of this great city. Lord, we just want to say thank you for this opportunity to bless your name and to give you glory and to give you honor. We pray for the citizens and every business, Lord God, every constituent, that you would pour out your blessings, that growth and success and prosperity will prevail and you shall get the glory and the honor. In Jesus' precious name we pray, and we all say it, amen. God bless you.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Bishop Walker, we appreciate the invocation prayer that you administered to us. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm Mayor of the City of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council. Tonight is a voting meeting and it will be-- we will vote on the items that were discussed at our legislative work session last week. This is a city council meeting of agenda items where official action will be taken. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda items, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. I'll go over a few protocol issues this evening and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. And you will receive a warning from the chair. If you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation, we will discontinue the conversation by turning the microphone off. One person speaking at a time, please. Please do not applaud or react. Speakers or speak from the audience, carry on conversations or be disruptive while you're at the microphone. We're only required to accept public comments or require public hearings, and if you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you would please put those in silent mode or if you would turn those off until the meeting has ended. The agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions if we have some additional questions that we were not able to receive answers from last Thursday at our legislative work session. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. If it's a public hearing, a maximum of 20 minutes for the item and 20 minutes in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. You only have one opportunity to come forward, and before you come to the podium, we ask that you would hand out your speaker card to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right. The cards are outside on the desk. They're blue cards. After that, when you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes to speak to us. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're here just to receive information. If you come up for citizen's comments, and then we will respond if we have the answers now, or we'll give it to staff, and they can respond to you at a later time. Any printed material, we ask that you would please give that to our city clerk as well. She will make copies and pass out the information to myself and council members. That's a lot of instructions and talking, but hopefully we're all on the same page. And now we will go to announcements and presentations, and we do have a very special presentation. It is a proclamation to Ms. Jasmine Moore of Grateful Hands, Inc., declaring the month of October 2023 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the City of Douglasville. I will read the proclamation, and then I'll ask Ms. Jasmine to come forward and receive the proclamation from myself and council members. Office of the Mayor Rochelle Robinson, proclamation, "In recognition of October as National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month." Whereas in 2022, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics reported that 21.3% of people with a disability were employed. And whereas people with disabilities are a vital part of our community as valued workers and business owners and are innovative and valued contributors in the workplace. And whereas the employment barriers that those with disabilities face are not at the forefront of the minds of the public and those who employment and livelihood are not directly affected by having a disability, they should. Although the percentage of employed disabled Americans has increased by 2.2%, there is still progression to be made. And whereas Congress realized and acknowledged the vital role this entire population has in our workforce and the well-deserved rights to experience employment. And whereas October is observed as National Disability Awareness Month, excuse me, to honor the contributions of people with disabilities to our country and to recommend to eliminating barriers in employment. And whereas we are committed to providing a workforce that supports diversity and encourages inclusion and embraces the diverse abilities of all of our citizens, supporting those abilities and providing them with the necessary accommodations to be successful employers. And whereas Grateful Hands, Inc., Elevate Douglas, and the Bobby Dodd Institute are collaborating to host an inclusive job and career fair that embraces and welcomes citizens of all abilities on October 17th from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Douglasville Conference Center. Now therefore, I Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville, and on behalf of the Douglasville City Council and the citizens of the city, do hereby recognize October as National Disability Awareness Month in the City of Douglasville and reaffirm Douglasville's commitment to creating a workforce where all citizens are allowed to be productive employees and eliminate barriers of employment. So proclaim this second day of October 2023. As Ms. Jasmine begins to speak, let's give her a hand for all the work that she's doing in the community. Ms. Breezy, do you have?
Good evening, Mayor Robinson.
Good evening.
City council members and members of this great community that are present in this room today. My name is Jasmine Moore, and I'm here representing Grateful Hands Incorporated. October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month. This year's theme is advancing equity and access. One of the purposes of this month is to educate the public about issues related to disability and employment. While I did not have any immediate employment barriers, that is not everyone's story, and that is why we are here today. Grateful Hands aims to educate, advocate, and empower those with a disability. We educate others on the challenges individuals with disabilities face and how they can help. In partnership with the Bobby Dodd Institute, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, and the Douglas County Chamber, we are hosting an inclusive job and career fair on October 17th. In addition to the job fair, we will also be hosting a resume and interview boot camp. Information about these two events can be found at elevatedouglas.com/jobfair. And I would like to welcome Breezy Stratton, Vice President of Elevate Douglas, to share a few words.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, and council members of the City of Douglasville and all Douglasville residents. I'm Breezy Stratton, Vice President of Economic Development for Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, and we are excited about this partnership with Grateful Hands and Bobby Dodd Institute and the Douglas County Chamber to host an inclusive job fair where members of all abilities are welcome to come. We expect to have over 40 Douglas County businesses here with a goal of at least 200 job seekers coming through on October 17th. The mission of Bobby Dodd Institute is to empower people with differing abilities to maximize their potential by securing economic self-sufficiency, independence, and inclusion within their communities. Elevate Douglas shares a similar mission. Our mission is to create a globally competitive and resilient economy with a superior quality of life in Douglas County. We can only do this if all members of our community have access to gain full family-sustaining wage employment. So with that, like Jasmine mentioned, we hope that all the citizens of Douglasville will come out on October 17th who are looking for new employment opportunities.
So I know everyone is probably wondering what is different about this job fair. Grateful Hands will be presenting to the Douglas County H.R. Professional Council to share with our local employers about disability and employment, the importance of accommodations in a workplace, and ways to help bridge the gap between those with disabilities and employment. The first step towards awareness and employment opportunities is for employers to have a better understanding of disability and employment and an open mind and intention on hiring qualified individuals of all abilities. In our conclusion, we want to leave you with this quote by Judith Hayman. Part of the problem is that we tend to think that equality is about treating everyone the same, when it's not. It's about fairness. It's about equity of access. Grateful Hands, Elevate Douglas, Douglas County Chamber, and the Bobby Dodd Institute would like to thank you, Mayor Robinson, and the city council members, the City of Douglasville, for understanding the vital role those with a disability has in our workforce, the right to experience employment, and making Douglasville a more inclusive community for all of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Moore, we will have council members say if anyone wants to have any comments before I do the proclamation presentation to you. But I want to thank you for turning your passion into purpose and for being an integral part of this community. Your footprint will never be forgotten. You are a huge-- you're leaving crumbs for the next generation, and as promised, I have the ADA transition presentation that the parks presented last weekend. I know you were out of town and could not attend, so I have the entire presentation for you. And I'm very happy and proud to be a member of Elevate Douglas's Board of Directors, and we will help continue and have the jobs fair on the 17th. Any other comments from the council members? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Moore, we're very proud of you for what you've done for the city and for a host of people out there who you've affected, whose lives you've affected. So it's quite remarkable. And it's interesting because I can remember in 1992, when the Americans with Disabilities Act was first passed, I was just starting out my architectural career. And it's gratifying, you know, that's over 30 years, it's gratifying to know how far we've come, but to think that it's been, depending on how you calculate, a generation and a half to two generations, we still have some distance to go. And so, you know, we have to keep diligent and keep working, and I'm glad the city is participating the way it is, but we'll keep fighting for you. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you. And Ms. Moore, we appreciate the comments that you brought to us about the town green amphitheater and the cobblestone, and those issues are being addressed, having people to escort differently abled to come and have a seat at the amphitheater and enjoy the concert. So we appreciate everything that you've brought to the table. We made the city staff aware, and it's going-- it's being addressed now. But we'll give Ms. Moore a hand for all the things that she's been doing in the community. We have our, going off script, we have our Douglas County District Attorney, Ms. Dahlia Racine. I know she was trying to leave in the audience, and if you would like to come by and just talk about Ms. Jasmine and where she works, I know I'm putting you on the spot. Do you mind? Ms. DA, thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share the great news about the amazing work that Jasmine Moore does. You obviously are very familiar with her Grateful Hands organization, but that is just part and parcel of the really dynamic contributions that she makes to this community. She is part of our PACE unit, Programs Accountability and Community Engagement, and what they're responsible for is for making sure that our accountability programs, which are run by our Superior Court judges, as well as our pretrial diversion programs, run smoothly. This is an opportunity that Ms. Moore takes personally, along with the rest of her team, to connect those in our community that just need a second chance, that need some help, that need some resources, with that opportunity. And she does a tremendous job at that. In addition, she also is responsible for our CHINS, which are children in need of services, so kids that come in through our juvenile court system that also need that resource connection, that extra support. She is our liaison for that work as well. So Jasmine is a true servant to this community in all capacities, and as if the work she does within our office isn't enough, that she goes and she takes her time after she leaves our office to really keep contributing to the community. And she is just a superstar. She was recently recognized by Georgia 40 Under 40, so we are extremely proud of her for that as well. And just proud of her and the work that she does. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to brag on her and her tremendous contributions.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. District Attorney. We appreciate that. And Ms. Moore, we're so proud of you and her parents. We'll ask the parents to stand. We've been knowing them since North Douglas Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Moore, for your support of your children. And that's a hooty-hoo right there. Olivia says to tell you, December 12th at 10 o'clock, she's going to join the Hooty-Hoo Alumni Club. So, thank you, Kennesaw State. Thank you again. Let's give her a hand as she moves on. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on with the agenda. We are at the number five on the agenda. If you have the printed one, if not, you can follow us on the screen. And it is the approval of the agenda. So I will open the floor for adoption of the regular meeting agenda for October 2nd, 2023. Open the floor for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Oh, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second to adopt adoption of the regular meeting agenda for tonight, which is October 2nd, 2023. We have any questions, comments, or concerns about the agenda? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda is adopted for the meeting this evening. Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes of September 14th, 2023, which was a legislative work session and executive session, and the minutes of September 18th, 2023, committee meeting and executive session and regular meetings. Open the floor for a motion to approve item 23-368.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. I have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 23-368. Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-368 is unanimously approved. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any corrections, deletions, any concerns as it relates to the consent agenda from the elected officials? Heads are shaking, no. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-385 is unanimously approved. Now we'll move on to the next committee. We're at item number eight, Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Committee, Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Councilman. We'll move on to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Council Member Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to Housing and Community Affairs Committee. I don't know who the vice chair is. Let's see. That's Councilmember Adams.
Again, no business tonight under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. We'll move on then to item number 11, which is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor. No business tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on then to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
To consider, that is to consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of adopting tributary phase C2A on 27.38 acres at Ancote Street, land lots 154, 155, 162, 163, District 1, Section 5, parcel 015501, 50560, application by Gaskins and LaCraul, care of Mr. Michael Charleston. Mr. Gordon.
Good evening, everyone. I'm James Gordon, 6701 Church Street Engineering Department. I have no further information from what we discussed on Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I was not here on Thursday, so just as a refresher, I just want to make sure if there were any questions or concerns, that those have now been taken care of. Were there any, was there any information that needed to be supplied that we do not see? Okay, I know there's a lot of information there on that plat, but want to make sure everything is in order. No questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, there were some typographical errors, and so those had to be, it was something that was already passed, but we resubmitted to have those items cleared up and corrected.
Yes, correct. I saw those in the notes. Okay. Any others? All right. Seeing none, then we'll make a motion that we approve item 23-391.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved, and second moved by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Councilmember Estes, to approve item 23-391. Do we have any additional comments, concerns, or questions from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-391 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. That's all that we have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. We'll move on then to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on then to item 15, Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The PR committee has no business this evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to item 16, which is Public Safety Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have some items. Item A, considered application for the alcoholic beverage license of the retail packer sale of wine and malt beverage at the following establishment. Proposed license, Super Marco Smoke Shop INC., location 6457 Church Street. Proposed agent outlet manager, Mohammed Shabara. The required fees have been paid into the finance department. Ms. Mohammed, please come down, please, if you're here. If you're not here, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve number 23-379.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved by the Chair, Councilman Davis, and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 23-379. Do we have any comments or concerns, any questions, anything to bring out as it refers to this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to verify, if I could, Mr. Chairman, is this in the basement of the convenience store with gas pumps on the corner of Veterans Memorial and Fairburn Road? Is that where that is on the lower level?
It's going to be a supermarket, yes.
Okay. The corner of Church Street and Fairburn Road. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I meant to ask this the other night. When it's a smoke shop, is that hookah or what is that? Just--
The applicant isn't here.
The applicant isn't here.
I just didn't know if anybody had any expertise in that area up here. I meant to ask that the other night, and I didn't.
I'm sure probably cigarettes and cigars.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I had.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving to item B, considered application for alcoholic beverage license--
Oh, we didn't vote. We didn't vote, Councilman Davis.
We didn't vote. Okay, go ahead. Already made the motion.
We did the motion in second.
Motion in second. All those, any other comments or concerns? Not hearing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-379 is approved unanimously.
Okay, moving to the item B, considered a application for alcoholic beverage license for the premise sale, on-premise sale and consumption of wine and malt beverage at the following establishment. Proposed license, Maxi Flavor LLC, DBA, south of Philly, location 8493, Hospital Drive, number 13, proposed agent outlet manager, Kevin Maxi. Required fees have been paid into the finance department. Mr. Maxi, are you here? Okay, how are you?
Good evening. How you doing today? My name's Kevin Maxi at 8493 Hospital Drive, number 13, South of Philly Restaurant.
Yes, Councilman Adams wasn't here, and he'd probably like to know a little bit about what you bring into this great city.
Okay. Right now, we have a small sandwich shop called South of Philly. We also have a food truck that we've had for over nine years, though. We've been in the Douglasville area since July of 2022. We officially opened in December of 2022, going into 2023. What we propose today is just to have a consumption on premises of beer and wine and malt spirits, malt beverage, not malt spirits, I'm sorry. And we're a small mom-and-pop restaurant that employs four to five people, four full-time, one part-time.
And this is located right there by Kroger, Councilman Adams?
Yes, right next to the UPS store in the Kroger Plaza on Longest Strip where Longhorn Steak is. We're direct neighbors to UPS store, in between UPS store and Beauty Supply. Used to be a pizza place. I can't remember the name of it. Little Caesar's Pizza, that's what it used to be.
All right, thank you. But Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion there. If there's not any more questions, to approve number 23-380.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. There's a motion to approve 23-380. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 23-380 with the explanation that the proposed agent outlet manager talked to us about Mr. Maxi, and we did speak with the police department last week, Councilman Adams, and we did not have any concerns since he's been in business. Thank you. Do we have any other comments? If not, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-380 is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good luck. Okay, moving to item C, considered the application for the alcoholic beverage license for the retail packer sale of wine and malt beverage and spirit liquor at the following establishment. Proposed license, Miss Freeville LLC, DBA, Highway 92 Liquor Store, location 5383, Highway 92, Fairburn Road, Suite 5385. Proposed agent outlet manager, Hareen Mistery, and required fees have been paid into the finance department. Mr. Mistery, will you please come down?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. State your name and address for the-- Thank you. State your name and address for the reference.
Here at Mistri, 5383 Highway 92, Suite 5385, Faber Row.
Okay, Mayor and Council, if you have any question, if I make a motion. If not, I'm going to make a motion to approve number 23-381.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Hank, point of order.
Yes, sir.
I know there were some issues that were brought up on Thursday. And Mr. Fowler sent an email requesting approval, acknowledging the stipulations. So we need to make sure that that is in the motion.
Thank you so much. Your point of order is recognized, and we need to read those stipulations into the motion, Councilman Davis, if you don't mind.
Do we have those stipulations? I know we probably have motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and then you'll read with your motion, if you make a motion to approve, if you'll read the special stipulations as provided by Attorney Fowler.
Attorney Fowler, you have...
Does the applicant? Yeah, Councilman Davis.
Okay. I have it.
All right, thank you so much. I apologize. I didn't know you didn't have it on your, you have it on your iPad now, Councilman Davis.
I have it on the iPad now.
Thank you, Councilman Estes.
However, the request the city, if all inspection was performed by Mr. Mike Miller this afternoon at 1:00 PM and found the following, an eternal doorway window for the subject unit to a adjoining unit must be removed, closed with firewall specification. The bathroom must be ADA certified, and the flood zone verification must be provided. Before I approve it, I would like to see all that written, if this file is okay.
Those stipulations are fine. There was a follow-up investigation after they granted the business license. Mr. Mettler went out today, noted those items were perfectly consistent, were perfectly fine with those. In fact, the property owner is here, Mr. Dax Patel. He's agreed to make those improvements as required by the city. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. If you have any other questions, if not, I'd like to make that motion with those stipulations.
Yes, sir, Councilman Davis. And we, there are seven concerns, and a lot of those issues that were brought up, as Councilman Estes said, about parking and accessibility for public safety for our department to get in, and the suitability for the site. We're not contingent upon the permit, so I know that's part of your recommendation and your motion to approve.
We had a meeting this afternoon with the attorneys and the assistant city manager, and we talked to discuss all of this.
Yes, sir. All right, so I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. Do we have any additional comments? It's been properly moved in second to approve this item, item 23-381, with the stipulations as read by Councilmember Davis, the Chair. Do we have any additional comments or questions, concerns as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
In opposition, please say nay. Thank you.
Obstein.
Oh, and one abstention. I apologize, Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem. So by majority, item 23-381 is approved with the stipulations that were read by the Chair and meeting all those requirements before the permit is fully given. So by majority, this is approved. 23-381 is approved with the stipulations that were read.
So I'll have a hand, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to item 17, Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business item Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts. We'll move on to item 18, Technology Committee, and that is chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to item 19, which is Transportation Committee, and the vice chair is Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Transportation Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, sir. We'll move on then to other business. Is there any other business to come before Council tonight from the elected officials?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to speak on something if I could, please.
Yes, sir, Councilman Adams. You have a floor.
As you all know, I'm not seeking reelection, so I don't have a dog in the race, but I'm surprised and alarmed and concerned that we are allowing those candidates that are running for office to have such an amount of leeway on our right-of-ways and properties with their signs. I've been through three campaigns. We were held to a very high standard. I'm not happy at all with what we are allowing in our city, and I would like for staff to tell me why we are not enforcing the ordinances that we have in place. Don't have to do it now, but I'd just like to know what's going on, that those have been made so lax. If we have the ordinance in place, I think it needs to be adhered to, just as we had to adhere to it. And I'm really concerned that of how it is appearing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. Ms. Reed, our Community Development Director, if you want to come forward and talk about that. And Councilman Adams, you are correct. This is my fourth run at office. I am running again. So I try to adhere by the laws as we raise our hands and swear when we are sworn in that we will abide by the laws of the city, the county, the state, and United States, and this is part of it. And the candidates were given the sign ordinance in a book that our city clerk was so gracious to provide, but a lot of the candidates have not followed that ordinance by having their signs swirled back, not in the right of way, and not putting signs on personal property when you do not have the permission. So I brought that information to our community director, development, community development director, and she has, from my understanding, addressed it. So if you would just explain to Councilman Adams and the rest of the council, please.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. So in the last few days, we have seen an overwhelming amount of signs being illegally placed in the right-of-way. In the last week, we have sent an email out to all candidates informing them of those rules to give them just a little time to remove them themselves, which means in the last maybe two days, as far as, well, business day is Thursday and Friday, had the opportunity to remove them. We started today pulling more signs than we have in the past because we were wanting to... They had the opportunity to remove them themselves. And the reason being is because they're so overwhelmed with the amount that's in the field, as far as, you know, out and in the streets and areas. If we were to consume and take them all, we would be very much, I don't want to say have, we would have a lot of signs in trying to find a location to pull them. So we're asking them to pull their own signs. So we have pulled a lot of signs today. There's banners that are out that do not have permits. We are out there actually pulling those as well. We sent an email out to them informing them of the process, and so that that way they're fully aware of what has been given to them. I know that the city clerk has given them information. I have given them information. We're pulling signs out of the right-of-way.
If I might, if I might reply, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Reed. I appreciate that report. I wasn't aware. I've been out of town a couple of days, and when I've come back, it seems we have more rather than less. And of course, we're approaching the election, and so I'm sure that that will be the case. First of all, let me, I should have stated this before I started talking. No one has asked me to mention this. This is me. This is my community. I live here. I would like to see it kept in a professional manner, and I don't see that.
Yes, sir.
Secondly, I believe the last time we had this, either two years ago or four years ago, there was a spot down on the bottom of the conference center here in the back of the parking lot that we brought the signs into, put them out on the concrete. People came by and picked them up.
So we still have that.
Well, that, so that is the spot that I'm assuming they will be, that people could come and get their signs.
Correct. I am partnering with our Public Services Director on not only storing those signs there, but he's also confirming right-of-way locations. A lot of people are not aware, but right-of-way locations, the numbers change based on the street. So not all streets have the same exact right-of-way. So we're partnering to ensure that we're going out to remove signs at the proper locations, and we also are confirming we have a location for storage. Greg and I probably talk every day. I think he's a little tired of me when it comes to the location of these signs, because I talk to him at least five times a day about these signs, seriously.
As long as he's been here, he should be used to it. You know, it's nothing new. It's old hat.
He's been a great partner. So he's been working with me, but there are signs below that we're working to remove.
I think, I think the easy equation would be if you get behind the telephone poles, the power poles, you'll be out of the right-of-way. It's pretty easy to, it's pretty easy to see it. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to know either you are or you are not legal. We need, we need to enforce it, period.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So Ms. Reed, oh, Councilman Watts.
I wanted to ask about a specific location where, I know there was a lot of signs, and the other day, they were, all the signs at this location were kind of piled up. So I'm thinking it's not zoning, but I, I don't know if I can get an answer now, but there's a small island right across the street on the corner of Chapel Hill Road, across from the Kroger. There's a small island there where a lot of signs are always placed every election season, where most of the signs, if not all, have been taken up but piled up several times. I don't know if that's private property, if that belongs to Georgia Power or Grace. So I was just asking, because somebody that's also running asked me to check on it.
I'll go out to that location tomorrow. I've actually toured the city in the last week just for this particular issue. So I'll go back out again on tomorrow to look at that location and have them removed. I know one of the complaints we've gotten is residents are complaining that people are putting signs in their yards without permission. So I've informed individuals, you have the ability and authority to remove and dispose of those signs if they're not, you know, they're put there illegally without your permission.
This particular patch of land, though, I don't see it belonging, there's several houses across a little driveway from this spot. And signs have always been placed there, but for some reason recently, a lot of signs have been placed there, have been pulled up, piled up a couple of times. So I just wanted to verify for those that are using that spot, including myself, whether or not it's okay to put signs there or we should look for another spot.
So I would say every property is owned by someone. So if you have that particular person's contact information, you could ask that person if it's allowed. I can find out the location, because it could be something that's owned by a government, which is somewhat easier to find that particular owner and contact them. But I can find that out and give you information.
Well, I'd be willing to bet that that is, that is not private property. I don't know who would own it. There's like three or four, maybe...
Coach, I would estimate that's probably like a mini Freedom Island there.
It is. It is.
But I have a question. Are you talking about across Chapel Hill Road or across Central Church Road?
Yeah, across Chapel Hill.
Because that's, that would not be the city. That would be county.
But, but if the county was taking them up, they would just take the signs like we do. They wouldn't leave them in a pile, so...
I can't say. I don't know, but I know that's county. I was just clarifying which side of the road you're referring to.
Sometimes they do that when they cut the grass, though. Sometimes the crews will do that when they cut the grass.
I'm not seeing a whole lot of blades of grass being knocked down on that particular...
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
People just taking the signs and laying them down.
You know, anyway, I guess we'll find out, because I put my sign back up. If it goes down again, we'll see.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Councilman Adams, did you have something else?
That's all. Thank you. Appreciate you all listening.
I know, about the sign wars. Thank you so much, Director Reed. We appreciate that. But there is, now what's the trespassing? What, do you know how much it is from our police department or deputy chief trespassing? If you go on private property, there is a fine. You know, do we know how much it is, or we can find out?
Well, are you talking about for people putting signs on property without permission?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it would, they'd have to be given a criminal trespass warning if they came on the property off the right-of-way.
All right. All right, thank you so much. But it is trespassing if you don't get permission?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other comments, any other business from the elected officials? All right, we'll move on then to updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you so much, Attorney, Attorney Dotson. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Jordan. Our deputy chief, J.R. Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Deputy Chief. Our assistant city manager, no, deputy city manager, Ms. Karen Callan.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from citizens and delegates? If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, we did have your item earlier, citizens out there. So if you wanted to know how it went, you can come forward and we'll... Yes, sir, you can come to the microphone, please. I know you were here for an item that was presented last Thursday. Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address for the record, and then I'll respond if you have a question or give you some information.
Yes, Super Mercado and Smoke Shop, ma'am. 6457 Church Street, Douglasville.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, your item was 23-379. It was approved, but we did have a question about your facility that you're proposing, the smoke shop. Is it going to be cigars, cigarettes, is like a smoking lounge, or hookahs or what is it?
E-cigarettes and hookahs.
Oh, e-cigarettes and hookahs. So it's vaping?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
So, so Madam Mayor, my question then would be, is this a hookah lounge where you go in and sit and smoke? Or you just purchase the parts and pieces?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's not a lounge. It's a regular counter sales.
So it's a store to purchase those items?
Yes, ma'am.
Not to sit, so you don't have an area where you sit and smoke?
No, 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 ma'am. We just sell it. We just sell like...
Oh, you're just selling the items. Yes, sir. Well, thank you for the clarity. We didn't really know.
You must.
But we appreciate you being willing to come and give us those answers, and you were approved unanimously.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Ma'am, where we can take the printout?
You'll be sent, our deputy city manager, if you can talk to him. He was inquiring about his permit.
Yes, you can pick up your permit tomorrow.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies.
Certainly. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? If you sustain the meeting and like to speak to us, please come forward. You have five minutes to talk to us about anything that has remained to the city of Douglasville. Okay, I don't see any. If we don't have any other comments from citizens and delegates, we do not have an executive session. We don't have any other business. This meeting is adjourned.